The board had to start the meeting down at the administration building and then they had to make a motion to move up here, so that's why they're not here. At least, they told me they were coming, so, uh, but they'll be here shortly. I'm gonna go ahead, if y'all don't mind, I have a, uh, the board asked me to make a, have an opening statement, if you will, and, and I'm gonna go ahead and do that while we're waiting on them, it's not necessarily an agenda item, but, uh, you know, a lot of people have come by my office and talked to me, and I appreciate all the ones that have done that, uh, to try to explain this, but, the, uh, you know, the biggest question I've been asked is, you know, why, why we got to where we are right now? And, you know, there's a, for one thing, as a superintendent, I, I really, uh, really got tired, really guys, of paying, uh, attorney fees and taking things away from the kids in our school, and, uh, and I was having to, you know, 'cause there's, there's no secret about it, we, we had a lapse, uh, we, we were in between insurances when I got here, uh, and, and so we didn't have any way of, of, uh, taking care of that, and so on the advice from our attorney, um, you know, over the past twenty years or so, you know, our school district had dropped the ball on some things, and there was no, no disputing that, and the school district was what was really gonna be on trial starting tomorrow. It, uh, and the way I looked at it again, it was our kids that were gonna be on trial, because we, uh, we were gonna have to put the stop on some things, and, and, uh, and that, that's what kinda, as, again, as the person that was up here every day with our, you know, with the kids and seeing what was going on, you know, we just didn't see an end, and on the advice of our council, uh, we knew that we, we were probably gonna lose the judgment, and, uh, we kind of accepted that we were gonna lose this judgment, and, uh, the fear of that happening is what led us to tonight. You know, we could, I had, you know, I had a patron that said, "Well, Mr. Glover, why don't we just go ahead and take it on?" You know, "Go ahead, go fight." The school does is wrong, okay, just blatantly, and if, and if you have the opportunity, if you have the opportunity, I encourage you to go read some of the depositions. I reread a bunch of them just last week, and if you, if you find those, you go read those, you'll see that, you know, the school, you know, had made some errors in, in policy and in how we, uh, administered those policies over, over the years. The gamble that we'd have taken, had we gone, hadn't gone to trial, was that, uh, the judgment could have been a lot more, and the judgment could have come back where, where we had to pay attorney fees, if we got awarded a, a dollar judgment, we would have had to pay the attorney fees on the other side, and, uh, the judgment could have been a lot more. And if that happens, guys, that all went, that totally went on our taxpayers. There was no way we, you know, by law, any judgment would have gone to you guys, so that's why, uh, the decision was made that it was. Um, and I know it's not good.
Glover, Mr. Glover, where are the depositions? We can all...
I don't know what that website is, uh, does anybody know?
Are they available?
Yeah, they're, they're available, they're online.
And so you were saying, though, that the results of actions in the past, not related to the next settlement, that's a lot of settling.
Well, a lot of them, yes, sir, a lot of them, because it was allowed to go back to two thousand and five, and, and...
So, that's part of what happened in two thousand and five?
Well, let's just, let me finish, okay? Let me finish, and so that, that's where we, that's where we got to where we are, and so, I, uh, I'll tell you this, and I know there's some of you that don't wanna hear me, I understand that, but, uh, it's one of the hardest things that this board, definitely myself, you know, I stepped into it when I came here, and I knew that, but, and I wish you, I wish there was a different outcome, but, uh, the risk for our school district and the risk for our taxpayer payers was really what these individuals were looking at, and, uh, when they made the decision, and didn't matter, there's nobody gonna win, you know, there's, really, I don't, I don't feel like anybody, anybody on our side, anyway, was, was a winner, and some things, like I said, it's, wish we'd never gotten here, folks, and that's David Glover speaking, I wish, wish we'd never got to this point, okay, so, now, they're here now, so we'll let you start a meeting, okay?
We've got a couple minutes yet. Seventeen.
They say you still have a couple of minutes? Hmm, yeah, I've, uh, I've exhausted everything I can think of, but, again, it's, it's difficult.
It's seven ten, the meeting will reconvene, um, we'll start with public participation, um, first up, um, first of all, the board won't comment back to you on anything that you're discussing, you have a time limit of three minutes, um, derogatory statements toward employees or the board are not tolerated. First up is B.J. Wager, who wants to talk about the settlement.
Good evening, as Charles said, I'm B.J. Wager. Life is tough, and being on a small town school board can be even tougher. You've all been put in a tough position due to one family, as we all gather here today with the majority against your decision to settle, but there's nothing we can do now since the decision has already been made. You voted, and not all the board was even present. You voted with one board member being involved in a lawsuit and being charged by the district attorney. You voted to settle with one board member's son being a witness to the plaintiff's case. The conflict of interest with your vote is very high. The school district has spent millions of dollars to prepare to go to court, then on November seventeenth, some of you decided to settle for five million. This burden should not go on the school district taxpayers, as it should be pulled from the general fund. It's not the district's fault that the insurance lasts. You, as a board, voted not to settle the original settlement, per legal team's advice, but now those same lawyers have decided they can't win. They threw in the towel before the court even started. You let a Twitter bully lawyer beat you. You let the OSU fraternity hazer himself beat you. You simply let entitlement win. To the lawyers, I don't know if you're here or not, you did one deposition, thirteen did over forty, hats off to them, even though he is a bully. You wasted our taxpayers' money, one point four million dollars is what I believe I found. That is not acceptable, and I hope when your CPAs say that you need to make a donation, you, a member of Kingfisher Public Schools, and donate that money back. To Terry Payne, you told many why you're running the school board, even when you got elected, your goal is to get Coach Myers fired.
Not true.
You got your mission, and I hope you resign.
Yep.
To Coach Myers and your family, thank you for all that you've done for all the students and the athletes. You're a true Hall of Famer that believes in hard work, discipline, and doing things the right way. As I said above, I do not support the settlement, but the time is now that we put this behind us and come together as a district and start today by building for the future. We must do a better job keeping our teachers, administrators, and students from transferring to other schools within the county. Give the teachers their bonuses, give the kids the best that they can get to learn, to advance them for life. Mr. Glover, I wish you the best of luck, and I hope you hire a great coach that will be able to build upon the foundation that Coach Myers has set. Go Giants!
Deborah Parks. Hello, I'm Deborah Parks. Um, I was hoping to be able to get some answers, 'cause I really feel like there's a lot of, um, questions that haven't been answered. Um, from the longstanding Attorney General opinion eighty-four thirty-nine, there's a requirement that schools pay debts from the general fund, and the section four, it states there is an obligation upon the school to liquidate investments to pay outstanding warrants. What is the reason for Kingfisher not abiding by this legal opinion? Sad that we're not getting any kind of response. Also, um, the Oklahoma Schools Risk Management Trust, there was a board member from CPS, so we would have had knowledge that this program was becoming insolvent. Who is responsible for the lapse in the liability insurance, since this would have covered a settlement payout? Really unfortunate that we're not gonna get any feedback as a community that's gonna be saddled with this tremendous burden that we had nothing to do with.
No. No. I don't hear Will. Okay, uh, can you hear me like this, or do you need me to use the mic?
Use the mic.
Okay. My name is Tom Edgar, I'm a former pharmacist at Kingfisher. I, uh, came here in nineteen sixty-four, and I've been here for sixty years, next one. And, uh, I was here for six months initially, and then I went to serve my country as a lieutenant in the medical service corps in U.S. Army. I always wanted to practice in a small town, and this is Kingfisher. It is a small town with great people. The people in this town are probably better than any town in Oklahoma, so we wanna preserve that, um, but a five million dollar settlement to be paid by the taxpayers, that's, that's a big something, that's a lot of money, and I, how many taxpayers do we have here in the audience? Raise your right hand. Okay, the majority here is taxpayers. Uh, if, that's a little money to be paid, but taxpayers were hazing, and I've been around schools for a long time, and, uh, hazing went on a lot, and it's, not that it's right, but it, it can get out of bad, but five million dollar settlement for wet towel popping in the shower and, and so on, that's a lot of money. This will be a precedent for more lawsuits, probably. Now, if the school would pay with their existing funds, that's from the general fund that the taxpayers have, have created, I think everyone in this room, over ninety percent, would be satisfied, and if this doesn't happen, I think ninety percent will be dissatisfied. The whole thing was, got out of hand, and we've gotta get it back under control, 'cause it could unintentionally destroy our great town. Let's all parties and opinions work together to correct these mistakes and allow our great city to be embarrassed by local TV coverage. This is my uninformed opinion. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Rutledge, I'm a resident of Kingfisher, have been for fifteen years. I would like to say that what you, what you all do is a selfless job, I wouldn't want it, the decisions you have to make, right or wrong, it's a tough spot to be in, especially when you're picking up somebody else's paper, okay? Let me preface my statement to show that I refer to me as me. "We" refers to the citizens of Kingfisher County. "You" refers to any current, past, or affiliated individual, group, or board member, in part or in whole, with any involvement in the current decisions pertaining to the matter in reference to the use of tax decisions pertaining to payout funds of set expenses, fine fees, or judgments. We are not liable for your mistakes. March of twenty twenty-two, a settlement offer of one point million dollars to resolve this issue was unanimously rejected by the school board. At that time, the board boasted to having ten point one million dollars in the general fund and nearly one point eight million in the building fund. We are not liable for your mistakes. The general fund carryover going into twenty twenty-three was projected just under eight point one million dollars. Yet, the board chose again to spend the funds on projects rather than be prepared in the event of a settlement or award. We are not liable for your mistakes. In twenty twenty-two, the board green-lighted approval... In twenty twenty-two, the board green-lighted approval for one point seven million dollars for a turf project for the athletic fields. Doing so again with the knowledge, pending litigations, and possible monetary penalties withstanding, we are not liable for your mistakes. Additional projects were green-lighted, eating even further into the funds that now show only one point seven million dollars will remain in the building fund with another one point seven million in the seeking fund. We are not liable for your mistakes. School district insurance coverage was allowed to lapse. That possibly could have helped offset these legal expenses. KPS failed to settle this issue in two thousand twenty-two and then proceeded to spend the remaining funds, leaving the burden on the taxpayers in the form of an estimated twelve percent ad valorem property tax hike to carry over for three years. We are not liable for your mistakes. For the average household, this average tax increase of approximately eighteen hundred dollars a year for King Fisher residents. With the average property tax increase in King Fisher of four percent in previous years and the addition of the twelve percent a year, that's a forty-eight percent tax increase for us over the next three years. We are not liable for your mistakes. The board is hiding behind Article Ten, Section Twenty-eight of the state's constitution, which lists the ways in which revenues for seeking funds can be applied. Meaning KPS will only have one way to pay their wrongdoing: raise taxes. We are not liable for your mistakes.
Morgan Winters?
Ford, I have a major concern that I'd like to be addressed immediately. After doing some research, I believe it's imperative that this be brought to the attention for the sake of our community. I became aware of an ongoing business relationship between Justin Mecklenburg and board member Terry Payne involving Lifeway Church. Comments have been made that there is no relationship personally or professionally. However, after retrieving up-to-date current documents from the Secretary of State of Lifeway entity, it shows that Justin Mecklenburg remains principal and director of the church entity as well as the registered agent. You'll see public records and recorded deeds and witnesses showing that Justin Mecklenburg has an obvious interest in Lifeway entity. I believe the documents I provided clearly indicate that there's a relationship and a history of financial beneficial relationships between the Payne family and the Mecklenburg family. I spent many hours reading through the court documents and depositions regarding this case. I believe I'm well informed. I see documentation that upon joining the board, one of Terry's initial conversations with the superintendent was around the topic of toxic culture within the athletic program. It's evident a board position was motivated by the upcoming lawsuit that he knew would transpire. Then confirmed once again when I read depositions and statements by Terry's children. You'll also see a copy of a certified letter that I received today, threatening to sue me because I brought this public information to the attention. I request the financial disclosure that is required of the board members to file. I received that today. It's signed and dated today. And you'll see that he discloses absolutely no material financial interest, which is clearly defined on the document in connection to Lifeway Church, of which he and his wife are pastors. I find it hard to believe they have no income. He signed and stated it's accurate and correct and understands that falsifying this document is a violation of state law. As a very concerned citizen in this district, I respectfully asking for the resignation of Terry Payne from the school board. I fear his position on this board is achieved with ulterior motives and has damaged our district's fighting place.
My name is Steve Foreman. I'm a long-term resident of King Fisher County. I know several of the board members. Know a lot of the people in this town. I have two sons that went to school here. Coach Myers coached them. I had absolutely no problem at all. My family's been here since land run. We have commercial property in this town. I just absolutely can't understand how we got to this point. There's been statements made tonight about responsibilities. What I don't understand, and I still haven't had it explained, how a school board could have approved an insurance policy that didn't have liability coverage. We wouldn't be in this situation if someone had done their job. I don't see much being said about the superintendent at the time that this was involved. I don't know if he's here. Is Sternberger here? I guess not. When my kids were here, we were at the top five percent of academics in this school district, if I'm not mistaken, from the state level. The academic performance of this school system has suffered, and I'm not sure why. We had a lot of money spent on athletic programs here. And I don't have a problem with investing in athletics. My father was on the school board in cashing for over thirty years. So I know a little bit about Stanley Foreman, that's my dad, he passed away. He was on the school board for thirty-some years. And I know that the superintendents are hired. And the superintendent's responsible to the school board. And the superintendent, if I'm not mistaken, is charged with looking at contracts and presenting those contracts to the school board. My question is, what happened? If that insurance policy did not cover the liability for this school system at that time, why was that not caught? To me, it would have been a responsibility of the superintendent to inform the school board about that. School board members are not experts on insurance. They rely on the superintendent and staff to do that. I have not seen anything brought up other than the liability coverage wasn't there. This company went bankrupt. So my question is, the people who are responsible, which I understand one of them is Sternberger, are they going to be called up and questioned about what happened? Potentially to cause our community five million dollars in losses? I just wish that would be answered. There's a lot of good things been said tonight. The people who came up here don't want to beat this up. I appreciate superintendent here that's got a tough job. You inherited this. Our community didn't ask for this. And I feel really bad for our community to have to deal with this kind of embarrassing situation. So my prayers to the community, to the school board, and all the people involved. And I just hope that we can get through this and move forward. Thank you.
Honors and recognitions. Discussion, possible action on the minutes of November sixth, twenty twenty-three, regular board meeting. And then discussion and possible action on the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, special meeting. Discussion, possible action on the minutes of the November sixth, twenty twenty-three, regular board meeting. And then discussion and possible action on the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, special board meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November sixth board meeting.
Mr. President, I will need to abstain from this vote because I was not present at the November sixth meeting.
All right, a second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Now to the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, special board meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes listed for the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, special board meeting. Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Discussion, possible action on the following general funding encumbrances, co-op funding encumbrances, change order listings in the general co-op and child nutrition funds, treasurer's report, activity fund custodian report.
Make a motion that we approve item E. Concern to financials.
All second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. F, discussion, possible action on the youth and family services contract.
Does this upstand?
Yeah, this is a yearly contract with youth and family services so we can call on them to help us with individual students as we need it.
I make a motion that we approve item F for youth and family services contract.
I second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Discussion, possible action on the following board policies. One, nepotism. Two, prohibiting bullying. Three, student conduct dress code. Four, spectator code of conduct, athletic program, use of metal detectors, substitute teachers. Seven, sexual harassment of students.
If you look, each one of these are revisions to what we already have. Okay, we got, if you read through those, we received them. Do you have any questions on any of them? The only one that's new that we'll be adopting tonight is the sexual harassment of students. Okay, this is one that we'll be adopting new and adding to our policy book. And the others are just revisions to what we already have. On the dress code, that is a umbrella dress code revision. We have more specific dress code requirements in our student handbooks. That is what is required by the state, so that's an umbrella.
I'll make a motion we approve letter G on board policies.
I second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Discussion, possible action on the following fundraiser: NHS shirt sales.
Let's national honor study. Make a little money for their ceremony before we adopt them.
I make a motion we approve item H for the NHS fundraiser.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Go ahead and move to item K, superintendent's report.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to our principals and let them give reports as we do each week on their, start here with you, Mr. Harris. Mr., I guess everybody's here. No, Ms. Michael is visiting family and she's not here tonight with the upper elementary. But our other principals are here, so we'll let you start us off, Mr. Harris.
Well, it's kind of somber tonight, but I do want you guys to know regardless the good things that happen inside these walls every single week. Because the kids that you send us, I can't thank you enough because you've raised them right and we're trying to continue that. The sophomores and the seniors, here's the last four weeks basically and the next upcoming. The last four weeks, we had sophomores and seniors participate in Reality Check. That was put on by the OSU extension. Was that the women's building? Where they kind of go through a monthly budget. And, you know, hey, how do I pay my bills? How do I reconcile all this stuff? So the kids really got into that. The FFA held their craft auction. We held our Veterans Day assembly that was outstanding. It's outstanding every year. We kicked off our wrestling and basketball seasons. We held our biannual career day where the speakers had a wide array, in a wide array of professions, spoke to all of our students in breakout sessions. I know a lot of people stopped by and talked to you, Mr. Glover. They stopped by and talked to me. We had professionals throughout the community come in. And the one thing that I'd like to say is there was many more things accomplished with that. But they all, we surveyed them. And I'd like to give a shout out to Ms. Lefingwell and Ms. Bowser and their committee for putting this together. But every single presenter mentioned how respectfully engaged our kids are. And again, that's not us, it's you. So thank you for that. The, coming up, okay, so the next, and I'm hogging the mic, sorry, guys. Band and vocal Christmas concerts are this week. Sophomores will tour the tech center to see if they're interested in any of the programs out there at the tech center coming up this week. We're continuing our annual angel tree where we adopt families that need a little extra help during the holiday season. We're doing that right now for the community. And heroes in waiting, I don't know if you guys have seen Malcolm Tubbs. He's a really fired-up guy that's, he works for Fox Twenty-Five and done some work with the Thunder and OU. And he's doing an assembly, kind of a positivity assembly when we come back from January. But, yep.
Jordan, I see you there in the back. Why don't you come up here, buddy? This young man, Mr. Jordan Beck, found out last week. Was it last week?
Uh, yeah, Friday.
Yeah. Jordan, get up here, everybody see you. Jordan has been accepted, as you can do, at Notre Dame University on a full scholarship. And I know, talking about one of the good ones. And that's one of our good ones right there. So very proud of you, Jordan. I guess you don't want to speak? Okay, all right. Okay.
Hello, I'm Chris Ferris. I'm principal of the junior high. I want to thank you guys for giving me the I wanna thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to influence your kids. You guys have great kids. I'm very proud of them. We have great things going on in the junior high. Uh, vocal music, performing concerts, have been competing. We kicked off the basketball season last week. We, our kids played Blanchard and Bethany. Right now, it well, might be over down the hall. We have girls playing, uh, Newcastle and the boys are at Newcastle. We, we had a fantastic wrestling tournament over the weekend on Saturday and Friday. Our, our kids came in fifth. We were four points away from third. So, they did a tremendous job. In the, in January, we are planning for Rachel's Challenge. If you do not know what Rachel's Challenge is, it's a anti-bullying kindness program. They come down and work with our kids. They will do a community event in the evening. Uh, I'll invite you guys to come. That'll be the twenty-second, twenty-third, I believe. You'll get more info on that. But, uh, Rachel. Rachel was one, one of the first victims at Columbine. Her parents were very distraught, but when they were cleaning out her room, they found her journals. And she had listed in her journals all the kindness acts that she had done. And they developed a curriculum out of it. Yeah, I, I hesitate to say it's an anti-bullying. It's more of a kindness program. And they work with our kids about being kind to each other. Um, I would challenge you guys to come to the community event. Like I said, we'll have more information in January for that.
Hi, I'm Makyla Tolleson, Gilmore Elementary Principal. And we are getting so excited to be moving into our new, uh, newly remodeled area soon. And next week kicks off some really fun activities. Well, actually this week, towards the end of this week, we're going to have the K-Test choir come. And they're going to do a sing-along with our students in the gym. We do it every year and all of the staff and students look forward to it. And then we're gonna have some dress-up days and Christmas parties next week. And then coming back in January, um, some of our professional development. We're, we're gonna be working more on, um, some more vertically aligning essential standards. And we're also going to do an all-staff, um, district training on the Run By Pike. So, we're looking forward to all of those things.
I am Lisa Meyer. I am the principal at Heritage. We have a lot going on at Heritage. This week, Thursday, we have the music program for the third grade. There's two performances. At ten-thirty, we have one for the students and at one, the parents are invited. This week, um, starting today through Wednesday, we've been doing a middle-of-the-year assessment. And so, we have been really trying to encourage the kids to do their best. And so, um, Coach Waltman has agreed to help us with an incentive of a dodgeball tournament. If the kids do better, and they're all going to do better, I promise. So, we're gonna have a dodgeball tournament for those kiddos, um, at the end of the week. Um, next week, the kiddos are gonna go to the movie. Um, we've got our gifted and talented, they get to go to the ballet. Um, we have Christmas parties that are coming up for our kids. A faculty dinner that, um, I've been able to have an anonymous donor pay for. And then, um, my newsletter. If you're wanting to know what's going on at Heritage, um, my newsletter is, we all have newsletters, both of us. And my newsletter is on the website. So, if you're interested, just log on to K-Test, or, or, here's your website and then click on Heritage and you can see my newsletter.
So, the only thing I would add is, uh, if you haven't been over, you know, trying to, uh, I've heard a lot tonight about different projects and things and, and how, and you're right. Okay, but also these kids that go to school here, uh, they're important also. And that's why I'm trying to, uh, you know, we tried to keep them with their heads above water. Kingfisher kids are the best. And, uh, just like the young man that's going to Notre Dame, just like every kid up here is a, is a special kid. You know, if you go by Gilmore, the, uh, Gilmore is broken into four different phases. And, uh, that's a great building named after a great, a great gentleman, a great administrator here. The building is just dated and dangerous in some areas for the little ones. And so, we did complete our, as soon as the punch list is done. So, we can have better, better access for special ed kids. You know, it's gonna, it's, it's really, it's really a positive. If you go in there, please go by and see Makyla and she can give you a, a run-through on that. You know, our vo-act kids benefited. You know, we had money left over also from our, uh, the bond issue that you approved for the junior high. And that paid for a number of the things that you're talking about was the, the money that was approved in that bond. You know, the, the locker rooms, you talk about, we, we still don't have enough room for the kids and the programs that we have. But those will help. Those will help a lot for, uh, to give kids somewhere to go instead of kids on top of kids. So, you know, there's a lot of good things. I, I encourage you, if you haven't been to an elementary music program that is put on by, or a, uh, elementary music teacher, go. Because you'll never see a better program. It's amazing what she gets most of those kids. I, I tell a lot of them, they're, they're like I was, their mouth in it. They'll lose their mouth and there was a smile on their face. And, uh, but she does, she just, just does a fabulous job. And, uh, anyway, I encourage you to go. We've got Vocal Music's Christmas concert, I believe, at the Nazarene Church. That's where that's gonna be and that'll be on, uh, uh, Thursday night. I encourage you to go check that out because those kids are fantastic. They, they were gonna come tonight. We had eight all-stars in Vocal Music. And they were gonna come tonight, but, uh, because of what's going on, we didn't really have room for them. So, yes, sir. I don't know, that's under our board press. Anyway, we, we, uh, the band concert's coming up also. I encourage you to go to that. I'm not sure where that's gonna be held. Do you know, John?
Sunday, two-thirty.
Sunday, two-thirty at the gym.
Yeah.
Okay, that's where the band concert's gonna be held. So, get out and see those kids and what they're doing.
Item J, discussion, consideration and action to approve the settlement agreement consent judgment that was reached in the case of Mecklenburg versus Independent School District Number Seven, Kingfisher County, and United States District Court for the Western District of Oklahoma, case number CIV two-two dash oh-eight-nine-g. Following the Board of Education vote on number November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, that authorized the district attorney to settle said case in pursuant to sixty-two OS three-eighty-six point five, the payout consent judgment over a three-year period based on sinking fund levels made against the district tax base.
Mr. Glover, I wasn't here when we, when you presented to the, um, audience. So, did you mention that, um, that we had an option to, do you wanna talk on that?
Yeah, I have a.
Sorry, Brad.
I have a couple of things that I think to the board, I'm more talking to the board and to the superintendent. Uh, when this thing got pretty sticky, I went and got my own attorney to make sure that I was doing what I was supposed to and that also that it was, uh, things were doing kinda right. And so, um, while I, I really have no intention of making this motion or, uh, seeing it through, I was not at the meeting. Uh, I do recommend to the, to the board, the current action item as written, uh, states that the, simply states that the, that, uh, let's see, that we authorize the district attorney to settle the said case. I feel like that leaves us on an island that opens us up for liability by ourselves. And, uh, the worst thing that we can have is after this lawsuit is to have another one. And so, I, I handed each of you guys a, uh, some additional verbiage that, uh, basically says that the, uh, that we've to approve that if, if you, if you're gonna make a motion, that we do it, uh, on the advice of the council. As the council did, uh, what they felt was best interest. And, uh, I think that that helps to, uh, uh, provide some other support in, in the school. I just looking out for the school and what the school has, I don't wanna, I don't wanna alienate ourselves. I also wanna say a couple of things because I think that there's a lot of people here that are upset and angry and, uh, looking for answers. And I'll, I'll give you guys a couple of things. Uh, I understand that this stuff comes from me, Brad Whitrock, those that you don't know. But many of you probably saw some, I saw a lot of media, uh, most likely, most likely you see a letter to the editor from Randy Mecklenburg. I wanna let you guys know that, uh, there's a lot of holes in that, in that story. I hope, I hope that those holes can be filled soon because, uh, it completely changes the dynamic of how you can look at your school board. And past, to the people asking about insurance, it is my understanding that insurance did not ever lapse. Uh, there's a misconfusion that the, that the insurance did not lapse. The school has always had insurance. The school bought insurance. In fact, in Mr. Mecklenburg's, uh, letter to the editor, it tells exactly how much money we paid in insurance premiums on that day. So, the problem is, is that the insurance carrier notified us that they were not, that they were not going to be carrying us. We went immediately and, and got, and retained another insurance carrier. Then the lawsuit came out. When we took that to our current, uh, carrier, they said that they didn't want our cover, they did not have our coverage at that time. So, we had to go back to the other carrier and the other carrier was insolvent. And that cannot be held on any previous administration or board members that an insurance agency went agent, went, went bankrupt when we had insurance coverage. So, I know it's frustrating, guys, it's, it's super frustrating. I, I am too. This would solve a lot of these things. But that's one whole area that, that we, that is my understanding in talking with past and current, that everybody that we always had insurance, but when they go insolvent, we don't have any coverage. Secondly, secondly, I will say, or the, the next thing I'll say is that despite the comments that say that we can, that we have an obligation to pay this, I went to the office and talked to the other, uh, board members. And, and despite everybody's belief of what we have and what was reported over a year and a half ago by Mr. Mecklenburg, there is not, even if we did cash out our CDs, there's not enough money in our funds right now in our general fund to pay this in full. So, that doesn't have, that's not an option.
Even without rehabilitation, can you reallocate funds from, from said projects instead?
Correct, correct. And so, and so, there's not enough money in our, I'm, I'm saying that as of right now, at, at the end of November, if we, if we went into our, that, that, we can't, that's not an option right now, guys. I'm not, and I'm not trying to make it, make a, make a, uh, make this a big deal or whatever, but I'm telling you that it's not there. Okay, I don't know how much I can say on that, but I'm telling you it's not there. But, so with that said, I went to Mr. Glover, I talked to Mr. Glover, uh, talked to the other board members and we did find one possible solution. I talked to the attorney, uh, the school's attorney who advised that getting a judgment that had already been signed would be pretty difficult to get that modified. That we could not make a loan and pay this in, like, pay this over the course of years. You cannot use, I believe, he said that you cannot use current money to pay future debts. I'm sorry, you cannot use past money to pay future debts. I say that right? I'm sorry, you can't use, I said that backwards. You can't use future money, you guys make me nervous. You can't use future money to pay past debts. So, we can't budget this in the future to come back. So, we got creative. Some of you may know this, some may not. We went to the treasurer's office, or we went to the assessor's office, we went to the treasurer's office. The treasurer sends the tax notices out in November. The school does have the ability that if we can come to our year-end or we can budget or we can reallocate funds or we can do whatever we can, that if we can, if we, if the school is able and has the money, we can go to the treasurer's office each year and make this payment before the taxes are sent to the community. And after talking to each of the board members, that is our goal, that we can push, that we can, that we can reallocate or we can budget or whatever, that we can take the, we understand and Mr. Glover talked about how maybe there was some stuff from the past. Whether you agree that, that, that one household in this, uh, in this, in this community deserves all of that or not, it's not, it's here and where they're, the, 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 the cases there. The issue is, is that we are going to try to handle this burden. And just because any vote may happen today doesn't mean it's over. Because you have a board that I have talked to that is committed to trying to handle these payments on our own before it ever affects, before those bills are sent to you guys. I'm not making a promise, I'm just telling you that that is the goal of what we're trying to do. You guys can carry on.
Alright, thank you. That's what I needed to get here. I wanted to make sure we said it. So, therefore, I move to approve item J. Pass, okay. I'm three now, this table. Okay, so I make a motion that we approve item J as listed, um, per our legal counsel. At the advice of counsel, sorry. If I were just in a second, I'm sorry.
Brad, is there an amendment to that?
I didn't make a motion.
Does this all? So, the motion's been made within the, and at the advice of counsel. Eric? Do I have a second?
Give the mic, you can read the motion again, please.
Discussion, consideration and action to approve the settlement agreement and consent judgment that was reached in the case of Mecklenburg versus Independent School District Number Seven, Kingfisher County, United States District Court for Western District of Oklahoma. Case number CIV two-two dash zero eighteen, following the Board of Education's vote on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, that authorized the district's attorney to settle said case in pursuant to sixty-two OS three-eighty-six point five, the payout consent judgment over a three-year period based on the sinking loads made against the district task base. At the advice of our counsel.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item held, discussion possible action on the recognition for employment at the following positions for the remainder of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Chance, Matt, Mainland, Carolina, Villa, Library Eight, and Harida Dillman.
Chance came to us, he's, uh, he lives in Guthrie, which, you know, is just replacement of, uh, Coy, you know, went to work at Mercy and then, uh, Natalie, Natalie went to work out at the, uh.
Cedar Ridge.
Cedar Ridge. And so, we, uh, we hired Bobby, has come in and done a great job. I can't remember Bobby's last name. What is? Bobby Wilkinson. And then, uh, Chance is coming to us. He's, uh, main thing I like about Chance, he's got HVAC experience which is really needed around here. Maybe he can help us out with some of our heating air issues. And then, uh, but both of these are just replacements for, from others that have resigned. And then, uh, but both of these are just replacements for, from others that have resigned.
I approve item held.
I still move.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Item I, discussion, possible action on employee stipends.
Not, it's the one that works. Y'all have it. I echo, there's been so many comments made today about our staff and our, um, gosh, we have amazing teachers, amazing staff, all of the above. We're very blessed, but I'm not sure who said that. I think it was Mr. Edgar, how blessed we are in this community. And while I truly, truly value them and want to give a stipend, I think from my standpoint, our focus needs to be putting the money towards the, um, payment to the county assessor so that we don't put the burden on our taxpayers. Um, so therefore, my opinion is we table this until a later date. I don't know if anybody else has any opinion, but it's just, I'm one of five.
How much is it? The total for the stipends?
A five-hundred-dollar stipend for the two-hundred-and-twenty-four employees would come to a burden of a hundred-and-forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars for the district. Seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar stipend for the two-hundred-and-twenty-four employees would come to a burden of two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty dollars. A thousand-dollar stipend for the two-hundred-and-twenty-four employees would come to a burden of two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty dollars for the district.
Our teachers shouldn't pay the price for these mistakes.
I was gonna say, I second that call right now. Those table lists and, uh, okay, and make some other work.
All those in favor of tabling the motion? Those opposed? M, resignation.
I'd like to, I would like to say something. I, uh, I would like to say that, I wanna echo exactly what they said, that our staff and our, and our teachers do deserve a, a round of applause. They do a good job. They work with the team. The kids are full of it in Notre Dame. They do a really good job. And I, I hate that for you guys, but I, I have to respect that and, and I don't, I don't, that doesn't need to build anger. We need to move forward together. We all, we all need to move forward together. Uh, understand, guys, that, uh, our, our income is based on gross production. Just a little more information, it's based on gross production. Fortunately, we live in an area that gross production over the past, I don't know, five, six, whatever, seven years has been fantastic. It, it's come in above our expectations to the tune of three million dollars. It's easy to give stipends. That's not, that's not now. And, uh, unfortunately, uh, there's some concern for how the school handles some situations. There's a household in our community that feels that pulling five million dollars from the other kids in the school is, is a solution. They understand the legal system. They got it. I don't even, I don't even wanna say that it's a family, I just wanna say it's a household. And, uh, I want to, uh, let you guys know that, uh, I, I do wanna prepare the teachers for a long ride because we do need to cover this for our district and the citizens of our district. And so, it might be a little bit, but if I talk to Mr. Glover, who is, was a teacher for a day or two so far, he's gotten, it's, it's not normal to pay the stipends that we have been paid. We did meet the, uh, the teacher, the state raises that came up, so everybody did get, uh, an increase in pay. I applaud the state for doing that. But I just want you guys to know that just because it may not happen in the future doesn't mean that we don't appreciate you guys, uh, we're fighting for you. Uh, this takes a lot of money out of our budget, uh, things that we can provide for supplies and that. And, uh, I just hope that everybody's willing to stick together and, uh, we can, we can, we can end some of this anger and we can, uh, turn it around, we can head forward.
So, Brad, we do have insurance now?
I understand.
Item M, new business. Announcements? E adjournment?
I make a motion, we adjourn at eight oh-seven.
All those in favor?